Hi Josh. How you doing?
Very good.
Thanks for coming.
Good evening and welcome to the August 22nd, 2017, Pecosin City School Board Meeting. Would you stand please for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda tonight?
We do not.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to recognitions.
Well, this evening, I'm going to actually ask that our four principals come forward. So if the principal of our middle school, Ms. Bunting would come forward, as well as Dr. Syak from the high school, Dr. Wood from the elementary school, and Ms. Harper from the primary school. While they're coming up, Pecosin City Public Schools has been selected to receive a 2017 Virginia Index of Performance Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award based upon data from the school years 2014 to 2015 and 2015 to 2016. This is awarded from the Virginia Department of Education and recognized by Dr. Stephen Staples, Superintendent of Public Instruction. A school division receives this distinguished award for meeting federal pass rate targets and graduation targets and for making progress towards educational goals established by the Board of Education and the governor. In addition, the division must earn 75 VIP points, including bonus points, in each content area, which we did. Along with receiving division recognition, Pecosin Primary Elementary and High Schools also received the 2017 Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. This award again recognizes schools for meeting all state federal benchmarks and making progress towards the goals of the governor and the state board. This year's distinguished achievement award was earned by only 15 school divisions and 231 Virginia schools. Please join in congratulating our principals on the work that they, their teachers and staff did to earn this recognition for us from the state. Congratulations.
It's always nice to be recognized and thank you for the great job that you're doing. Let's move on to presentations and reports. Ms. Woodruff, would you come forward with the financial update, please?
Good evening Chairman Cass, members of the school board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I wanted to let you know that the finance staff have been working very hard over the last two months to close out fiscal year 2017 and prepare for the auditors. The auditors have completed preliminary work and field work for the activity funds at each school. They will return to the school board office mid-September to begin final field work. Finance staff are also preparing to assist schools with fee collection during open houses next week. As we have done in past years, parents have the option to pay via credit card. Cash and checks will also be accepted during this time. We encourage students to pay their fees at open house, but if they would rather pay online, there is a link to the online school payment portal on the PCPS website under student fees. We met with new teachers at orientation today and benefit enrollment is open for them to make their selections. I'm also working on the state required annual school financial report for fiscal year 2017 that is due in September. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions? Mr. Pappas, could we have an operations update, please?
Good evening Chairman Cass, School Board, Dr. Parrish. As the school year approaches, it's important to remember that buses will be on the road each morning and afternoon. This will have an impact on traffic patterns because once school buses are on the road, it may well lengthen the time of the morning commute. People need to remember that cars may not pass stopped school buses when they are loading or unloading. Once you see the red flashing lights of a school bus, you may not pass that bus until all of the students have either loaded or unloaded and those red flashing lights are turned off. Remember, this is also true on With Creek Road as it is not a divided highway with a median in between. As board members know, we continue to research the possibility of adding devices that may assist us in deterring drivers from passing stopped school buses. The PCPS transportation staff will be participating this Friday in one of the two required in-service trainings, and that will be an all-day event for them. The PCPS transportation staff just sent out documentation to all K through 5 parents to give us information about the needs that they may have for alternate bus stops. An alternate bus stop is when you don't get picked up at home or possibly dropped off at home. It may be a daycare center in either the morning or the afternoon. Having that opportunity for parents to do that and give us that information now is very beneficial, especially as we start the school year. In the area of custodial services and maintenance, both departments are culminating all of their summer activities, deep cleaning, and doing project works, and that's all wrapping up as we speak, just in time for teachers and students and staff to return. This last year, the city gave Pecosin City Public Schools funds for three capital projects. Those were the track resurfacing, the heating ventilation and air conditioning, also known as HVAC, at the high school as well as at the primary school. The track resurfacing has been completed, and we still have lighting and fencing to be completed in that area. Virginia Dominion Energy is assisting us with the lighting project, and we have scheduled to get that done with them and their assistance after Seafood Festival. The high school HVAC, heating ventilation and air conditioning work, which involved all of the rooftop units, is completed. The work at the primary school HVAC involved each classroom, rooftop units, and the large mechanical items in the gym and the cafeteria. Most of the work that impacted classrooms was completed over spring recess, you may recall. With that said, there's still some additional work in the classrooms that's being completed over the next two weeks. All that remains is a controls system. The control system is what gives the maintenance technicians and others the ability to see what all the systems are doing and whatever, what's happening in each and every space, including classrooms. This project will be completed in the next few months. Please bear in mind that even though I'm waiting for the control systems to be completed, every space is conditioned and everyone, students, staff, and teachers will be comfortable during the remainder of the project. And that concludes my operations report.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. Any questions for Mr. Pappas?
I have to say, I'm comforted that you know that school's starting in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Fox, would you come forward with an instructional update, please?
Yes. Good evening Chairman Cass, Vice Chair Whitaker, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. This evening, I'll be sharing with you some of our SOL data and other information related to instruction. So it is a little bit longer than normal, so if you'll bear with me and indulge me tonight, I have a lot I'd like to share with you. So as you may have seen recently in the news reports, based on the preliminary data that has been shared, all PCPS schools have met the state accreditation standards, and we at this time are fully accredited. So that's good news for us. SOL testing administration updates, just want to give you a few updates for this coming year for some of the things that happened last year and some that will be coming in the future. All students in grades 3 through 8 took computer adaptive testing in mathematics. You've heard us often reference that as CAT testing. CAT testing was also given for the first time this year in reading in grades 3 through 5. Our performance-based assessments, or PBAs as we refer to them, continue to be given in lieu of multiple choice assessments in history for students in grades 3, 5, 6, 7, and writing for grades 5. And you'll remember that that was from the State Department of Ed in an effort to reduce the number of SOL tests that students take. And then our SOL assessments continue to expose students to the technology-enhanced items which require critical thinking and problem-solving skills. So this graph shows you, or chart rather, shows you the Virginia pass rates for this year's assessments, our scores in the 2016-17 column, and then last year's scores. And these are the cumulative combined scores for a grade level. So for instance, if you look at reading, that reflects the pass rates of the reading tests taken in grades 3 through 8 and grade 11. So you'll also see that we meet or exceed last year's pass rates in all of the areas except for history, and we have met or exceeded all of the state pass rates. Just a few highlights from the English testing that we had this year. Of the seven reading tests that were taken by students, five had higher pass rates than last year with pass rates as high as 97 percent. And the rate, the state rate for pass rates for English is 80 percent. So you can see we're exceeding those quite well. Grade 4 reading saw an increase of four percentage points with 23 percent of those students scoring in the pass advance range. In the grade 7 area, reading increased by two percentage points with 26 percent of the students passing in the pass advance range. In grade 11 reading, we saw pass rates increase to 97 percent, and the number of students scoring in the pass advance range increased by three percentage points. In the area of mathematics, as a division, we maintained the overall pass rate of 85 percent with 17 percent of our students scoring in the pass advance range. The state average for the math pass rates is 79 percent, so we exceeded that as a division. Pecosin Elementary School saw gains in pass rates for all math students in grades 3, 4, and 5. The middle school saw 8th grade math students' pass rates increased by seven percentage points. And at the high school, 95 percent of our students in Algebra II passed their SOL Science, just briefly, just as a reminder, we give science assessments in grade 5, grade 8, Earth Science, Biology, and Chemistry at the high school level. And all five of these had pass rates that were 91 percent or higher, with the highest being a 98 percent. The pass rates in grade 5 Science increased to 36 percent. And same for Social Studies. Here's a list of the current SOL assessments that we give. So grade 4 is known as Virginia Studies, grade 8 is Civics and Economics, and then in high school, it's World Geography, World History II, and US and Virginia History. And again, all five of these had pass rates of 91 percent or higher, with the highest being 96 percent. And the pass advance rate for our grade 4 Virginia Studies is now over 50 percent. And looking ahead, just some of the things we anticipate for this coming school year. The new history and social science standards have been adopted and developed, and the first assessment using these standards will be this coming May in 2018. The revised math standards have been approved, and the new assessment will be given for the first time in 2019. So our teachers will be doing this year what's called a crosswalk year where they're looking at the prior standards and the new standards. Our reading CAT tests will also occur this year for students in grades 3 through 8. So this year, the elementary did them, and now we're going to add the middle school this coming year. And again, that's computer-aided testing. And VDOE continues to look at the accountability system and how we assess our students, our schools, and our division. And you'll hear more about that from Dr. Parrish on Friday at our convocation. So I'm going to shift gears a little bit, and I just wanted to introduce you to some of the things that you'll see. If you've logged into our website as of last night, you will see that we now have a new face to our webpage and our web presence. We are now compliant with the standards set by the Americans with Disabilities Act, and we've developed a greater consistency across the departments, our grade levels, our schools, and our teachers with our new webpage. You'll see a refreshed look, and students and parents are no longer required to log in to access teacher information. This is probably going to be one of the bigger changes for our parents and students. That information is now what we consider open, so they don't have to have a login to be able to access that information. So it frees things up for them quite a bit. So if you forget your password routinely, you're going to be okay because you can get that information at any time. And just one of the other bigger pieces is that we do have a change to our web addresses. And right now, if you log into the old web address, you're going to be redirected. But we are publicizing this information extensively. What you'll see is there's a lot of consistency here, and it matches our email extension. So you just add the school abbreviation at the end, and it'll take you directly to that school site. So this should make things a lot easier to remember and for accessibility. But right now, if you go to the old web address, you will be redirected, so no worries about getting to us. And this is the new homepage that you'll see when you initially log in. You're going to see this new banner across the top that will have rotating pictures that will cycle through different ones throughout the year. And every school's page will look similar in terms of the structure. I'm just going to show you the division page tonight. You can navigate to a school site from this homepage as well. Up at the top, there is the ability here for you to select a school. So you can go to the division page or any school page from this one site. What's really neat about this too now is we have a search feature on our site. So if you're looking for something in particular and you can't find it, you can search using these buttons on the side. We also have instant translation services that are now available, so any family, there's 100 different languages available, so if they need to translate the information, it can do that for them. And you also, you'll see this as a direct access to our Twitter and social media accounts. These are called one-click quick buttons, and so what they represent is it'll take you to some of the most popular websites, pages that are accessed most often through the division. And these are on every page, and they'll be standard. We can change them if we want to, but right now, we have them set to the Power School Parent Portal where you access grades, your food services, so anything revolving around your menus, your lunch prices, transportation, bus routes, let's talk, which Dr. Parrish will talk a little bit about later, our staff directory, which will be a very nice, quick way for you to access someone if you need their email address or phone number, our calendar, and then our school hotlines will be there for you. So those are one-click, and they bring you the information. As you scroll down, the next piece you'll find is a calendar. So this is just a brighter, more refreshed way to see information. On the front page, you'll see five days' worth of information that's relevant to the division. And then if you click down the bottom, there's access here for you to view more information, and it will actually bring you up a full calendar where you can see a whole month. You can scroll to any time of the year that you want to see. So we'll keep that updated with relevant calendar information. And then as you scroll down a little bit more, one of the, I'm not sure if you can see that clearly, it looks like it's a little scrambled, but that is the news portion. And they will actually be little circles of bubbles that have a picture, and when you move your mouse over it, some text will appear, and when you click on it, the full news story will appear. And again, just like the calendar, there's a way for you to access all of the news. Down the bottom, there's a button you can push that will bring you all of the news. But it's just a more interactive type of way for us to share some good news stories that are out there about our schools. So sorry about the graphic. And then just switching gears, for whenever you go to a department page, for any department in the division, and this will be the same setup on the schools pages where they have departments, you're going to see the standard format for every page. We've tried to bring some consistency so that when you go looking for information, no matter what page you're on, it'll be in the same place. So everybody will have a welcome message that includes a little bit of information about what that department does. This is for the Department of Finance, so Ms. Woodruff's department. She's given us a description of what her department does, and then there's her contact information, including phone and email. So it's a one-stop shop. You know who's in charge if you have a question. And then on this side, these are all active links where if you click on them, they'll take you to a new page that has information relative to that department. So every page will be set up the same way. And then these are our teacher pages. And again, to bring some consistency for parents and students, we've worked extensively with our principals and staff to set these up so that parents know where to go. K to 12, everything is looking similar. So this is Ms. Frisbee, who's currently teaching 4th grade, I believe, Ms. Dr. Wood. And again, you'll have a welcome here. She'll have a message that she creates. She'll pick a picture, and then it has her content information. So every teacher, when you first go to their page, this is what you'll see, so you have immediate contact information. Every teacher will have class information, assignments, their calendar, links, and resources. So under class information, you'll find things like the lunch schedule, or maybe the encore rotation at the elementary and primary levels. At the secondary level, it may be the class syllabus where you can get more information about the class. Assignments will be anything that the teacher assigns, so homework, classwork, tests, quizzes, anything like that will be laid out for you there. Parents can know where to get that information. The calendar, they're going to be posting their tests or quizzes and their projects in advance for parents so that you can just pull that up and see what's coming up for your child in that particular class. Links and resources are anything that the teacher thinks a student might need to assist them, might be an online textbook, or might be a resource page for a project. And the secondary page, just so you have an idea, it looks very similar. And yes, this is Mr. Diggs. He is a teacher for us. He is not a student. He teaches Earth Science and Physics at the high school, an introduction to programming. High school pages, middle school pages will look exactly the same as the elementary. The only difference is because the secondary teachers sometimes teach multiple courses, there's this little plus here which will expand out, and when you click on it, it will then bring you to the same pages that the other teachers had. So same thing, class information, assignments, calendar, resources, and links. So again, a parent, K to 12, if you want to know a date for something, you know that you just go to the calendar on that particular webpage. And then last but not least, we've had a great week. We had our new teacher orientation the past two days that went very well. We have our teachers coming back tomorrow, bright and early, principals. Everyone is excited to welcome them back. And our division-wide convocation that we mentioned earlier is this Friday at 10:45 at Pecosin High School in the Forum. And we have listed for you our open house dates here, and there's more information about those open houses on our webpage, including the times. One thing we would like to share with our families out there, if you're a primary school family, the window for that is from 10:30 to 12:30. Teachers will be available during that entire two-hour window, so don't feel that you need to come right at the beginning to get in. You can come at any time during that window to visit with the teachers. And just keep in mind that parking is fairly limited at the middle, at the primary school. But we've extended that window for you to be able to come when it's convenient for you on Wednesday, August 30th. And Mr. Cass, that concludes my update this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Fox. Do we have any questions?
Thought it was interesting, one of the high school back-to-school days is September 31st.
Oops. Thank you. Sorry. That should be September 1st. Thank you. It's August 30th.
I have a question. The website looks great. I had a chance to kind of go through it last night to see if it was user-friendly. I just have one question. When you were referencing the teachers and their pages, are all teachers across the school district going to be using that? Because I noticed that when they use the other system in the elementary, primary school, they were used, but when you got up to high school, it was more of the Google Classroom. And so I was just kind of curious if this is going to be used across the school district or if in the high school, they'll still use Google Classroom and to communicate with...
Yes to both. Every teacher will have a page that looks like that, and if they're using Google Classroom, when you go to class assignments, it'll have a link there that takes you to the Google Classroom.
Thank you.
I have one, and hopefully it'll be helpful to the folks. When there are changes in standards that are going to be implemented, what type of input do they ask from the local schools?
They typically have opportunities for teachers to join. You can apply to be on a board or a panel that reviews it. They sometimes will also have public forums. They publish all of the drafts on their page and ask for explicit feedback. We'll send it out to our teachers and ask them to give written or verbal feedback on those standards.
Is there opportunity for feedback after the new testing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. They do send us and ask teachers to give their feedback once they've gone through the new standards.
Thank you. So great report.
Thank you.
Okay, we're excited tonight. We're moving on to public comment, and we actually have public comment tonight. Desiree Rose from Nunn Elm Street. And Desiree, we're so happy that you're here tonight, and you have three minutes, but we're going to be liberal because you're the only one tonight.
Yay! I can take everyone's time.
Then an hour, we're probably not going to be able to do that.
No, I promise I won't be. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here, school board members and Dr. Parrish. You know, I come, I was hoping a few more people would actually show up, but I think the article that circulated with the Daily Press this week caused me some concerns and some questions, and I kind of just wanted to know, because you guys were the ones that did the tour. I know Mr. Pappas and Ms. Bunting, which is, both my children will be in the middle school this year. I can go directly to them. They've never given me any reason to go above them or around them, so that's not what I'm doing. I'm actually just asking for your exact feedback as to what you experienced during the tour. I watched the video. I read the article. I read the comments from other members of the community. And I have to say that I come from a little bit of a different background. My son, who is awesome and actually came with me tonight on his own accord, I promise he didn't, you know, wasn't dragged. Because it affects him, the decision and the, what you have to say will affect him greatly. He has an immunosuppressant disease, and he is allergic to 33 foods and molds and polysporins. And I have great concern of putting him in this building. I have an 8th grader, and he has been in the middle school since two years ago, and he had migraines when he was 3, has not had any issues until he entered middle school. We've talked to the pediatrician several times. We've kind of evaluated what's changed, and we discussed the building. And if you walk into the building, even as an outsider or a parent, you're greeted with a distinct smell. And that, I don't know, I'm not, I have no facts to tell you that that smell is mold. I can tell you that as a real estate daughter, and being around real estate all my life, when you enter a house like that, the first thing you want done is a moisture study because it's an alarming smell that doesn't just erase itself because it's been there for a long time. So sticking my immunosuppressant child in an environment that I can't just wait and see, he doesn't react anaphylactic to molds and polysporins. He actually develops a growth in his throat that we would have to check with biopsies. He's had 19 of those procedures in his life, so we'd really like to not have to do more of those. So sticking him in a building that may cause that inflammation to actually come forward and be worse causes me a lot of concern. When I have asked questions about how this would be addressed, one of the things that was told to me was that he would be homebound if he wouldn't be allowed to be in the building. He is a gifted student. He's been in the gifted program since the 2nd grade, super bright child, social bug that would pretty much dampen our spirits. I don't want to send him to private school. I pay tax dollars in the city. I like the public school education. I've been with all of the principals and have not had any issues that they haven't addressed with great respect. So I don't want to take them out in any way, shape, or form, but I just kind of wanted to hear from you guys after you took that tour. If any of you have kids in middle school, if you felt comfortable sending them to that environment, if you didn't have a kid in middle school, are you nervous about sending them to that environment possibly? And what is the air quality control study frequency? How often is that done? How regulated is it? I can stick a humidifier in my house and hope for the best, but we all know that that's necessarily not going to be the end-all, be-all. So that's where I'm at. So I don't know if you want me to sit while I listen to you guys, or...
You can stand, you can sit.
Okay.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. During the public comment time is a time for us to hear from the public.
Oh, okay.
We're not actually able to interact with you at this point, but what we can do is get back to you, and the staff and Dr. Parrish will make sure that we're communicating to you on what you presented tonight and your questions.
Okay, good. Because I want to hear from multiple people and not one united opinion if possible, because I want to make sure that what you guys witnessed as the people that took that tour, not necessarily, and I do social media and marketing, so I get a good marketing statement for everyone, but that's not really what I'm after, because I don't feel like you would allow the doors to be open if the school was not safe for our children. So that's not what I'm insinuating. So if that helps.
We do understand, and we appreciate that. The next several months, we're going to be talking about the many issues, including the condition of that building and making good decisions on that. But we promise you that there will be communication back to you. And if you, and I'm looking at each board member, if you would like to talk to each one of us, our phone numbers are on the website.
Okay.
But I would like the staff to address your concerns first, and then we can, we can chat with you just a little bit. But this is an issue for the administration, the school board, but we did see that. We were on the tour. So thank you for your concern.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for entertaining my two cents.
Thank you so much. We're happy you were here. Okay. Vice Chair Whitaker, would you please present the agenda?
Absolutely. There were seven items on the consent agenda. All of these items were enclosed in the agenda package, which has been online for public review. First item is approval of financial reports, then approval of personnel action, authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with attached requests. Fourth item is approval of minutes of June regular meeting and work session. Fifth item is approval of minutes to closed meeting on June 20th, 2017. The next item, approval of minutes of July special organizational meeting. And the final item on the consent agenda is authorization to dis...
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion for approval of consent agenda?
移到
If we have a second?
Second.
Thank you much, Ms. Reimers.
Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to other matters of consideration, consideration of approval of second reading of changes to policy manual. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought you the first reading of the policy manual to you in June. We did make two changes to that after bringing it to you. And so those are documented in the reading file that is provided to you. So we're now bringing this set of policy recommendations to you for approval tonight. As a reminder, our policy recommendations align with changes that were made in the General Assembly in terms of laws that were passed that we now need to incorporate into our policy. And we've received those through our recommendations of our attorney and then ensure that we align practice with that policy. So with that said, I recommend approval of the changes to the policy manual presented to you this evening.
Do we have a motion to approve?
移到
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Ms. Reimer?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Item B, consideration of approval of first reading of changes to policy 1-4.1, conflict of interest to second reading. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, our attorney contracted, contacted us during the course of the summer and realized that not included in those policy recommendations was those changes linked to conflict of interest. So we're bringing this forward to you as a policy change, but it sits in first reading because we need to bring policy in first and second reading. So tonight, what I'm recommending is approval to move this policy from first reading to second reading. So you'll approve that policy then at our summer meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
移到
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Are these placed online for people to review?
The policy changes, they're part of your board packet. Do we put the whole book up, Lena? Yeah, so they are, they are posted for them to see.
If anybody wants to see what...
They can see them. And once they're approved, the whole policy manual is out on the website, so.
Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Item C, consideration of approval for adjustment to the 2017-18 calendar. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, you approved the calendar back in March of this past year. What we do is we have an early dismissal day in October, and we align that with homecoming because we still have the tradition of having a homecoming parade, the Friday of homecoming weekend, which our students participate in. They get out of school a little early to do so, but it also does align itself with preparations for interims for students, other teacher work. But the homecoming actually is now not going to be on October 6th, it's on October 13th. So we need to move that early dismissal day from October 6th to October 13th. I know it's Friday the 13th. And so we're just bringing this to you. So if you could approve the adjustment to the calendar, and we'll make sure that that change is made in our calendars everywhere and anywhere on our brand-new website. So thank you.
Do we have a motion for approval of this adjustment to the calendar?
移到
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Reimers?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Chairman?
Aye.
Item D, consideration of approval of personnel action to approve head JV football coach. Do we have a motion for approval?
移到
Do we have a second?
Second.
Two seconds, so we have second and third. Do we have any questions? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Mosteller?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
I'm abstaining for personal reasons.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Ms. Whitaker?
Aye.
Chairman?
Fix one abstention.
Thank you very much. Dr. Parrish, can you kick off communication, please?
Absolutely. I also want to thank Ms. Rose for coming forward tonight and speaking with us. And we'll certainly be in touch with her and get her some information from not just us but others. But I do want to reassure you that we do do air quality tests in our schools at least twice a year. And enough, it is not a requirement for us to do that from the state or any other government agency, but we do do. I just want the community to know that we do, we do that so that we know our air quality is in fact safe for our students in all of our schools. I do want to thank everyone for their hard work this summer, especially Mr. Papas and our maintenance workers and custodial workers, because while summer is a bit of a slowdown for some folks in the school division, it is probably the busiest time of year for, for those folks as they ready our school buildings for the start of the year so we can get them in great condition for our students. So thank you for that. Many of you who may be listening this evening, and certainly our board members, know that we had a joint meeting with the city council last week to kick off the deliberations about possibly consolidating schools. We have created a webpage, a school consolidation webpage on our new website. It's available now. We've linked the video from that joint meeting to that website. And we'll be during the course of the coming weeks, be linking all information that we have to it. So it's readily accessible to all of our community. Dr. Fox mentioned Let's Talk. That is a vehicle for people to provide input. You simply go to our website and you'll see that link on multiple pages on our website. We actually now have as an item of interest, school consolidation. So it's a great way for our community members to send any questions they may have, concerns or comments or input that immediately get to staff and we're able to respond to folks if they do leave a telephone number or email address. Sometimes people wanted, want to do it anonymously, which is fine as well. That vehicle does allow you to do so. And this evening, we are going to talk about the process that the board will use for the school consolidation's deliberation and also get input from you board members as to the information that you need to begin those deliberations. So this evening, it's really about seeking information from you and process. And then I would envision in September, we staff members will be providing you with a lot of data. So beginning of September, we will be televising our work sessions or the portions that deal with school consolidation. We're not live televising tonight, the section on school consolidation, but we're recording it and we'll get it linked to our school consolidation webpage so people can access it very easily. And just thank you to everybody who's gotten us ready for the start of school. We're excited to see all of our teachers tomorrow and to see all of our students Tuesday after Labor Day. So thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Parrish? Mr. Holcomb?
Holcomb.
Thank you. Ms. Mosteller?
Yes, Ms. Chairman, I'd like to thank Desiree and her son both for coming tonight.
Creating input into this matter is extremely important and welcome, and I hope that over the next couple of months, there'll be more. I also want to congratulate all four of our schools for their full accreditation and welcome the teachers back.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hassel?
What she said, because that was perfect. Thanks for coming tonight.
Ms. Sheeler?
Yes, thank you for coming. I appreciate that.
For joining.
Just wanted to thank Principal Harper and the rest of her primary school staff. I have a daughter who's about to start kindergarten. And we had kindergarten day the other day where they measured the efficiency of some of the students. It was very efficient and effective for the amount of, you know, kindergartners that we have enrolled in our school. And she gave me a little back, back tour of the, all the teachers in action. And it was very well-run and great feedback from the fellow parents that were also attending that event.
I do have a few things. Thank you very much. This is the beginning of my last year here on the school board. It's been a wonderful ride. I've enjoyed the past five years very much. And I don't think you will have seen all of me. Once this year is over, I think I will be back to speak to the school board because I do have some concerns during my time here that continue. Bullying being one of them. Schools are starting. I don't want us to have intolerance. I want us to make sure that we follow the rules, but we take it very seriously, that teachers don't turn their heads and try to ignore it. I hope that it also goes into the athletics area so that there's no bullying in our athletic programs. I think it's disturbing, some of the stories I've heard from city staff. And it shouldn't be tolerated anywhere, and, but I care mostly about Pecosin, so it shouldn't be tolerated here. In the realm of public information, this whole consolidation issue is a big deal. We have about 13,000 people living in Pecosin. We have over 2,000 students. If you assume that there are, most of the homes are two-parent homes, you're talking about 6,000 people. Then you add in grandparents, cousins, other people who might be interested, you're talking about a huge portion of the population of this city. And it disturbs me that we do not have more people here. Mr. Reyes wrote a wonderful article in the Daily Press, and I think it got a lot of interest in the community, however, the community's not here. I'm disappointed. I hope they reach out to us, call us, email us, and come to future meetings because this is a big issue and it affects a lot of people here in the city. I love the new website. I think it's great. One thing I would like to see in addition to the new website would be additional social media outreach in the form of Facebook.